Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We will have the silent moment of silence and pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Satterfield.
Please stand for a moment of silence. The pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Welcome to the Knox County Board of Education March 3rd work session. Our regular session meeting will be held in this room next Wednesday, March 10th at 5:00 PM. Our next policy review meeting will be held Wednesday, March 24th at 1:30 PM in this boardroom. The Joint Education Committee will also meet on March 24th at 4:00 PM in this boardroom. And I would like to, this is one of those times where it's a shame we're not all in the same room, but I would like to welcome the BSA Scout Troops, the Boy Scouts of America Scout Troops 58 and 258. Troop 258 is an all-female troop chartered in Strawberry Plains. The troop was established in April 2019 and was one of the first female BSA troops in Knox County. BSA Troop 58 is an all-male troop, also chartered in Strawberry Plains. The troop's roots can be traced back into the 1920s in the Carter area. Both troops regularly use the, oh, I'll mispronounce this. Paschal? Thank you. Paschal, Carter Park. And they focus on outdoor activities such as hiking and camping along with many necessary skills such as knot tying and fire building. So they've joined us this evening to watch our board meeting and so sure that they'll enjoy it quite a bit. So welcome troop and we're glad you're here and hopefully you'll learn a little something tonight as we all will. So, welcome. Do we have any changes to this agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bounds, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and our vision, mission spotlight this evening will be by Ms. Satterfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So our vision to grow lifelong learners who contribute their talents, strengths, and skills to build a stronger community. And our mission to provide excellence and excellent and accessible learning opportunities that empower all students to realize their full potential. And I just want to dedicate this vision and mission to our board. We see throughout the nation, school boards are struggling and crumbling and resigning. And I think that we have done the best of our ability to govern Knox County schools this year and kept it cordial and respectful. So I appreciate that. Even when we disagree, there's a level of respect that we have for everyone. So I appreciate that from you all.
Yes, I'll second that. Thank you, Ms. Satterfield, for that. Okay, I would like to refer to Superintendent Thomas for his report this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to provide some updates for you this evening. So bear with me tonight, maybe a little longer than normal. So indulge me. So in tonight's report, I'd like to focus on a very important issue that will potentially affect all of our employees in hopefully a very positive way. In January, the General Assembly approved critical pay increases for teachers as well as school counselors, librarians, supervisors, principals, assistant principals, social workers, and psychologists during this unprecedented school year that's been impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. As just stated, this action was a response to the enormous challenges presented by the pandemic and our district expects to receive a little over $2.5 million from this allocation. If we shared that funding equally among all certified personnel, it would amount to a pre-tax incentive of roughly $443. Shortly after the General Assembly action, our local lawmakers sent a letter to Mrs. Horn, Mayor Glenn Jacobs, and me requesting that these dollars be distributed only to employees who are licensed to teach and who spend 50% or more of their time instructing students in the classroom, in the library, in the gym, or in other settings, including online instruction. So if we took the $2.5 million and shared it with this group exclusively, it would amount to a pre-tax incentive of roughly $542 for each of these employees. This school year has brought about unprecedented challenges and I'm incredibly grateful for all of our employees who have worked so diligently to provide both in-person and virtual instruction. Our administrators, teachers, and staff have done an outstanding job of implementing new health and safety protocols to ensure our school buildings are safe for teaching and learning. At the same time, they successfully launched a brand-new virtual learning program that is providing exceptional instruction for thousands of students who prefer to learn online. We have asked our teachers to wear masks, check temperatures, sanitize high-touch areas, maintain physical distancing when possible, teach in-person, teach virtually, teach both in-person and virtually simultaneously, switch from in-person to virtual on short notice, and to prepare and maintain emergency lesson plans, teach additional classes and cover classes when substitutes are not available. And this is just a partial list of what we've asked by teachers this year. Surprisingly, our teachers are still with us. I know they've worked extremely hard this year and as everyone has. We've asked our principals to prepare master schedules for both in-person learning and virtual learning, teach classes for teachers who are absent, check temperatures, enforce our mask mandate, meet virtually with teachers and staff, maintain physically, physical distancing when possible, be in attendance and enforce protocols for extracurricular activities, assist with contact tracing for students and staff, and to secure substitutes. Our central office administrators have worked tirelessly beyond the regular day during weekends and over holidays to provide support, resources, and strategies to help our schools be successful. In recognition of their extraordinary achievements, I am recommending that we use the state funding previously mentioned and supplement it with local funding to provide all certified personnel with a $1,000 one-time critical pay increase during this year of the pandemic. At the same time, our classified employees have done an exceptional job to support our educational mission. Health services staff have worked on nights and weekends to conduct contact tracing while still performing the responsibilities of their work not related to COVID-19. School nutrition employees have developed creative strategies to feed in-person learners along with virtual learners. Custodians have not only filled in for vacant positions but have also done extra cleaning to lower the spread of COVID-19. Our security officers have kept students and staff safe while navigating all of the new procedures. School secretaries and teacher assistants have assisted our school administrators and teachers with all the extra duties brought about by COVID-19. Maintenance employees have worked extended shifts to ensure that work orders are completed in a timely manner, managed distribution of disinfectant, sprayers, misters, and PPEs, built and installed sneeze guards, and assembled and ran wiring for walk-through thermometers. Our central office support staff has worked diligently to support our central office administrators and our school staff with both virtual and in-person learning, as well as provide customer service to our schools and to our families and to our employees. With that in mind, I'm recommending that all classified personnel receive a $500 one-time critical pay increase. I believe this recommendation accomplishes three important goals. One, it adheres to state guidance by ensuring that all state funding plus more is directed to certified personnel. It aligns with the request of the Knox County Legislative Delegation by providing teachers an amount that exceeds, that exceeds what state funding alone would have provided, and it acknowledges the hard work of our classified employees by also providing them with incentive pay. Net of state funding, we estimate that this action will impact the general purpose budget by approximately $4.8 million. Sales tax collections continue to reflect positive trends. We're currently projecting a $23 million surplus by the end of the fiscal year. Therefore, I feel comfortable in recommending this one-time critical pay increase for all of our employees in recognition of the commitment they have made to our students in such a challenging year. Know that this has been a slightly longer report than usual, but I do feel it's an important issue and represents a tremendous opportunity to show our gratitude in a very tangible way. And let me also thank our Board of Education for their leadership during this year. It's been a difficult year for our board with all the challenges. So I want to thank you. Wish I could pay you more, but I think the charter restricts that maybe. I'm not sure. Chris is here. He can, he can tell me. Bob, yeah, you can pay, you can pay the board more. So and you know, I think too, I believe we've been in attendance, we've offered in-person instruction, I think it is for maybe 106 days out of 115 days, which I think is, is pretty incredible for this school year for a district our size. And, and again, I, I just, just want to thank our employees, our teachers, our administrators. I try to do this all the time. I know it's not enough, but they've had done an incredible job this year. And we've got seven, seven days maybe to spring break. So hopefully our folks can take a few days off and we're going to come back after spring break and we're going to wrap it up this year. And hopefully next year's going to be a little bit different, I'm hoping, and maybe we can get somewhat back to normal. So thank you for the opportunity to provide my report. And that's, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that extended report this evening. Anybody have any questions? Okay, wonderful. Okay, we will move on to our next item, which is our ESSER 2.0 grant update. And Mr. McPherson will be giving us an update on these, on these funds.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. And I glanced over at Chris when Mr. Thomas said that. I think Chris will absolutely be open to maybe transitioning some of the county funds into pay increases for the board. He, I think he'd be happy to stay behind and talk with each individual.
Thanks, Chris.
So yesterday, you, you received information on a recommended utilization of ESSER 2.0 funds totaling $50.8 million. Keep in mind, these are funds used to address issues arising from the pandemic. We are recommending that the bulk of these funds, close to 70%, be used in three primary areas. That would be virtual instruction, sustainability of our one-to-one initiative, and also the purchase of textbooks, our ELA and, and math adoption there. So while we cannot use these funds to close revenue gaps in the standard, you know, just our regular operation budget, in other words, we can't just take $50 million and then throw it into the general fund and say, wonderful, our budget is balanced and, and we can move on. We can't do that, obviously. But strategic use of these funds will significantly benefit the general purpose budget in indirect ways because these are initiatives that otherwise we no doubt would be wanting to take a hard look at and trying to figure out ways we could fund them. And so the only funding source that would be, absent of these extra funds, would be general purpose dollars. So again, we can't use these funds to, to balance the budget. We can use these funds to address needs that otherwise we would be forced to grapple with during the budget development process. I'm sure you've already reviewed the list, so I'm not going to read those off. And I, you know, for the sake of time, I think probably it would just be more conducive to just open it up for questions and instead just me reading the list off. And I'll try to answer all those that I can. If I can't answer them, we have folks behind me and out in the foyer that, that can. So anyway, Madam Chair, if that's, if that's okay with you, we'll just open it up for questions.
Okay. What questions do we have? Ms. Bab. I can't see. I've never seen her look this far. So sorry.
Um, I have a couple of questions. On the virtual teaching positions, I'm thinking I'm doing these, these are for the future. Are we just somewhat predicting what we think we're going to need in virtual? How, how are we going about coming up with that number?
Yeah, I may have to defer to Mr. Ross. Like I can tell you that about, we're anticipating a cost of about eight million for this year that are unbudgeted. So what we are proposing is that we get reimbursement from those, we get reimbursement from the, from those costs. All right. And so then next, this would provide the, the remaining amount, which we estimate to be about nine million dollars, we would use that for the, the upcoming school year. I think that's about 130-some-odd positions what we have kind of run into this year. And you're probably asking, wait a minute, why is it more than, than this year? But what we've had to rely on for this year is a lot of teachers, significant numbers of teachers are teaching on their planning time. And so there's a lot of like asynchronous instruction going on. What this would do would, would provide us with a dedicated staff, particularly at the high school level, that can focus strictly on synchronous instruction. So I don't know, I, I can turn, I don't, if, does that help or?
Yeah, I just, I was more just.
John can talk in more detail about it, I think.
I mean, we obviously had a large number of students that chose in the fall. And I'm sure, you know, obviously none of us know what the fall is going to bring. So I'm thinking this is probably a little hard to even predict how many students we're going to have wanting to do virtual. So, you know, I just, I was kind of wondering about the wonders. But I, I had one other question about the summer school transportation. I'm assuming this is with the kind of required, what was coming out of legislation that we're going to need to do for summer school this summer?
And it's my understanding there's no dollars in there for transportation. Is this a John or a Russ? Russ, please.
Yeah, that was my question. So the legislation is not, legislature is not providing transportation dollars, but they are providing dollars for the instruction.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bab. Ms. Satterfield? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr., Mr. Watson and then Ms. Satterfield.
Ms. Henderson was actually before all of us, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Bab actually asked my question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Watson, and then we'll go to Ms. Satterfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McPherson, what are some of the major items that were considered for this final list that ultimately ended up getting cut and why?
Well, I would probably characterize it as not necessarily getting cut.
Sure.
It's our hope that, that any, like for, for example, mental health, to bolster mental health support, we are looking at that to program into the, the current or the upcoming operating, operating budget. So we, we took a look at that. You know, obviously intervention and so forth. So I, I don't want to characterize some of those things as being cut, but we've kind of fixed one half dozen of another. They would be allowable too. It's just that, you know, you kind of, if you, if whatever you fund in, in ESSER, that provides opportunities in the general purpose budget to, to fund. One thing we're, we're, we're very encouraged is that for the December, we, we received the December data point for sales tax. point for sales tax, and we're still projecting around a $23 million surplus. And that has held true over like the last four data points. It's kind of went between 22 and 23 million. I mean, it's very encouraging it's holding up. So, you know, keep in mind, if this holds up, we can significantly raise budgetary revenues up to just a base level before we even talk about growth. So we're, again, I'll use the word encourage there. We're hoping that that will, you know, that will be maintained throughout the rest of the year. John, did I miss anything else? I know, obviously, mental health supports and interventions, those are really big.
Sure. Yeah, the item that I was specifically interested in was the mental health supports. And so, you know, I'm glad to hear that you feel like we can still get the things down that we want to get done related to mental health supports in the general budget, especially because I think that's also a compounding factor with COVID. I think our mental health needs have certainly increased directly due to the pandemic. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of other traumas that families are experiencing, so...
Yes, sir. And again, I want to reiterate that it's not that that sudden, that mental health supports became lower on the priority list. That wasn't the case. It's more about strategically how to re-leverage dollars one to the other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question, lift it up for anybody that can answer, I just want to give thought to it. The biggest question that I'm getting in my community when it comes to COVID funding, really fun, is will there be opportunity or in the future, and what does this look like, and what will be the stipulations around community organizations that serve kids, KCS kids, that are opening their doors for this summer as well? Is there any relief fund for, or what are some of those stipulations? I know I had a conversation with Shannon that talked about the requirements for that is a long list. So just can you speak to it so we can get some answers?
With, I'll have to check into that. So you're, I think, Ms. Satterfield, what you may be asking is potentially federal dollars for nonprofits or partnering agencies that we... I'll have to dig around a little bit on that, that I can, I'll be happy to do that. I really don't feel like I can do the answer justice, right?
Yeah, and I apologize for not having that question to you sooner to have it prepared, but I would like that.
Okay, sure thing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. And now we will turn to, let's see, our fine arts specialist, Heather Castile. She's going to bring us the report on the Colorado aerosol study, which has been used to make determinations for fine arts in our schools. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to give you this information today. So last spring, we were seeing headlines like this, super-spreader events from choir practice. One person is ill, they all sing together, and it gets 52 other people ill. There were deaths resulted from this one, too, in March. So we're kind of worried as fine arts teachers. And in the summer, we get together and with these headlines in mind, and as we see performing arts events closing down, and they continue to be closed down to this point, we are asking, is it safe to sing? Can we even play instruments? This was the question that was on our mind. Luckily for us, there's some research being done in Colorado. This is through the University of Colorado that we named the Colorado Aerosol Study. It was commissioned by the National Federation of State High School Associations and the College Band Directors National Association, and it's supported by over 100 other organizations, which includes our national and our state music organizations, NAFME and TMEA. Those are organizations that our teachers are members of. They trust them. We engage with them all the time. The researchers are Dr. Shelley Miller and Yelena Serbich. They are qualified in air quality, health effects, computational fluid dynamics, ventilation. They are experts in their fields. And the goal of the study was to identify issues of aerosol production in performing arts activities and to find a way forward so these activities will survive the pandemic. We were worried kind of nationally that we weren't going to be able to do these things. So what was great for us was that they decided to release their information as they went. So we have preliminary results from July, August, and November. The study has not concluded, and it's still in progress. Once it is concluded, it will go into peer review and go through that process as well. So we're really early in the study. They wanted us to have this information, though, so that we could figure out what we're doing in our classroom. So what I'm about to go over is basically four parts. One is that singing and playing wind instruments, that's like the brass, like trombones and clarinets, like woodwinds. They produce aerosols, which is different than normal talking. We also know that if we know how aerosols are produced, we can develop mitigation strategies. So how do we lower the risk for our students and our directors? And then the other thing they found was that time, so how long are you singing or playing? The airflow in the room, what type of instrument are you playing, and how are you vocalizing? So are you singing high-pitched or low-pitched, loud or soft? Those all factor into how much aerosols are produced. And that we can mitigate those risks, we can lower the risk for our students or our directors by using masks, by limiting time, by making sure we're aware of our air systems, and then maintaining distance. So just really quickly, what is an aerosol? An aerosol is a very small particle. This just kind of illustrates some of the different sizes of things. A human hair is 100 microns, which is at the far right of the scale. Then you can see where like an asthma nebulizer is there at the around one micron. Smoke is around .1 or .2. A COVID particle, one little tiny COVID, is around .1. So this is one of the first charts that the Aerosol Study Group released. And really what I would like to focus on is the far right column. You can see a brown bar and a blue bar. And what we see here is kind of the concentration of particles when you sing without a mask. It's very high. When they mask the singer, that bar drops all the way down to that blue. That blue is about the same as me talking in my mask right now. So singing in a mask and talking in a mask produces about the same amount of aerosol particles. The other thing about this is this was a very clean room. They didn't have anything else going on. It was a little box with the measurement instruments in it. And then they sang and they performed into this little box. So playing in a clean box room, that's great, but what does this look like outside or indoors? So they created some computer models to figure out what does this look like when you are singing or playing outdoors? So this, I'd like to kind of show you this bottom left first. So this is your, this model, this person is facing to the left, and the wind is blowing to the right. And they are singing for 60 minutes in that bottom without a mask. And you can see even outdoors, the aerosol kind of picks up, and what they said was that between 30 and 60 minutes, there was exponential growth. It was a lot once you hit that kind of 60-minute mark. And then what we see is when we put a mask on even outside, there's still some aerosols, but it directs it a little bit more around your face, and there's a lot less of it behind you. The other thing to notice is what's happening at 30 minutes. It's very, very different than the 60 minutes. And then you can see also at 10 minutes, it's almost negligible. It's just the aerosols are just right around your face. Also, this person is not moving. They haven't moved their face at all for the 60 minutes in this computer model. They're just standing very still, facing the wind, and singing into the wind for 60 The other thing I want to note for the entire study is that when they're talking about wearing masks, they're talking about wearing perfect-fit medical-grade masks, not the N95s, but rather these kind of masks that I've seen some of you around here with. And perfect-fit means there's no gaps at the top or the sides or the bottom. Also, cloth masks are fine when we get to the guidelines, but they made sure to keep this constant throughout their study that they were using a mask like this. So now, what does this look like inside? Once again, so this room is about 13 feet by 14 feet in this computer model, and the person is in the very center. They're facing to the right, and this is a ventilation system that would be normal in a room. And you can see after 60 minutes of singing without a mask, no one's moving, there's only one person. You can see how the aerosol concentration builds up in that room. And then with a mask, you see how it stays just right around the person. And once again, if we see the difference between the 60-minute and the 30-minute, that's very important in their study. Okay, so this is from their latest, sorry, this is from their latest research, the preliminary results from November. They made a more comprehensive computer model. And in this instance, this is a room that is about 40 feet wide, 30 feet across, and then 30 feet high. The air comes from the top of the room and then exits from the bottom of the room. That's their ventilation. And in this case, it's assumed that Person One, that red arrow, has COVID. No one is wearing masks, and in this room, there are seven people with one director, seven student singers and one director. And what we notice is that in the bottom, there's a lot of information in this study, and I'm narrowing it down for you guys. So in that bottom illustration, we see after 60 minutes what that looks like in the space. That's the concentration of the aerosol particles. And if that person has COVID, those particles have COVID with them most likely. And what we see for Person Two and possibly Person Three, they are in that concentrated cloud, essentially. With the mask, we see that, and with that ventilation happening, we see that the airflow kind of goes with the mask. It comes up out of the top of the mask and maybe from the sides, but it's not coming out like it is without a mask. And in the right little box there, Person Two is not very much at risk. And in fact, what they found was that when you mask that Person One, Person Two is not masked, Person Three, no one else is masked but Person One, when you mask Person One, the aerosol concentration is reduced, reducing the risk of infection by 57%, which is a big number. This is also a clean-room scenario in this computer model. No one is moving, the HVAC is brand-new, it is perfectly running, and that's important to think about with our schools, what are the circumstances in our schools? This is an instrumental example. So they are testing lots of different things. They're testing singing, playing instruments, playing lots of different kinds of instruments. They're also testing theatrical voice and singing. And then I think they have some, at some point, they'll also test dancing, but they haven't started that yet. So with instrumental, they're really concerned, not just with the person's mouth, but how does the air flow through the instrument? And in this case, Person One has COVID. There are seven other students and a director. They're not wearing masks, and they don't have masks on their instruments. So Person One is playing the clarinet with COVID and does not have, it's called a bell cover. It covers up the end of the instrument where the air comes out. And once again, we see in that bottom right corner, when there's no bell cover, there's a lot of concentrated particles coming out. And when we cover that bell, we see on the bottom right that it is really, those particles are really maintained very close to the person, and it's not traveling, there's just not as many particles. And once again, it's very close to the singing when the Person One's instrument has that bell cover on it. The aerosol concentration is reduced, which then reduces the risk of infection by 56%. And one thing I wanted to point out here, we don't have very many classes with seven students in them. We have classes more like 40, 50, 60 students in band and choir, and they move around, and we have the air conditioner that we have in our system. So they went through all of these experiments, and really from the beginning, but they've clarified as they've gone, they've come up with some guidelines. And this is from the most recent drop in November. And their guidelines are to mask everything. So if you are a singer, you're an actor, you wear a mask. If you are an instrumentalist, you wear a mask over your mouth. If you play something with your mouth, there's a hole in your mask for while you're playing. And then you also put a mask on your bell cover. And the teachers are also masked in this scenario. That you maintain six feet of distance no matter what, because we see that over time those aerosols build up. And that six feet can really help mitigate those risks of the aerosols that are coming out. Timing is really important. They suggest that you stick with 30 minutes because of how much aerosols, even when your mask, come out at the 60-minute mark. So 30 minutes is their kind of timeframe. If you're outdoors, after 30 minutes, you can wait about five minutes for the aerosols to disperse naturally in the air. If you're indoors, you do 30 minutes of performing and you wait 20 minutes where the air can exchange, so it's kind of like a cycle of your air conditioning coming on, and the air comes in and goes out to kind of clear the room. They're also really concerned about what is the ventilation like in your room? Make sure you do hygiene, just like all of us do, but also there's spit valves in band, and they used to just kind of dump them on the floor. And now we make sure we put those in the, the spit that comes out goes in the trash, not just everywhere. And that masks are very important. They need to be well-fitting masks as well. So that is the study, kind of in five minutes to 10 minutes. I'm open to any questions if you have them of me.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate it. Do you know, have there been any studies for sports, like football and basketball?
I am unaware of studies for athletics. It's not something that I follow typically anyway, but I haven't come across any either. I do know that this study is supposed to cover dance at some point, but I haven't seen any examples, any results, any experiments yet from that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are some studies on gyms specifically that have just come out in the past week or so that may answer your question, but I don't know specifically from where. When the Arts Department started looking at this study, how did that impact what teachers were able to do in the fall?
Yeah, so we started at, we don't know if we can do this at all. So that's where we started our year. When this came out, we said, okay, we can follow these guidelines. They're easy to maintain, so we will stay away from each other, we'll wear masks. The band, all the band groups got bell covers for their bands, and we've been singing and playing in schools every day for all year, safely.
And if they, if you didn't have these guidelines, where would you be?
So if we didn't have guidelines at this point, like they disappeared today, I think we would have one group who would not do anything. We would get books out, and we would read, and we would respond to music and write about music. I have probably another camp that would assume that it's safe, and then they would carry on unsafe practices, potentially. I think our department is really glad that we had these guidelines. We were, we want to sing and we want to play, and this helped us feel safe in our classrooms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, one question. The outdoor case that would be, did you have your mic down? With the computer models, is that based on actual observation or just the computer model?
So there's two scientists working. One is in charge of computer models, and one is in charge of collecting actual data from people. So they work collaboratively, and one set has people in a clean room, and they're just testing and retesting and retesting what happens when you play this instrument, what happens when you put a bell cover on it, what happens when, and they go through all these situations. And that data then goes to the computer model people who use, it's in here somewhere, it's like a Riley, Wells-Riley equation, which apparently has been around for two decades in computer modeling. I'm not an expert in this, that's what I've learned. So they work collaboratively. So it is real data from real singing and real playing that then gets sent to the computer people who make their models.
Okay. You know, I think the issue that has been raised by parents is that we're making a lot of policy based on an observational study that hasn't been concluded, that hasn't had peer review. And I think, you know, I think Ms. Henderson raises a good point, do we have similar studies in athletics? And I don't know that I've seen any, but I think we have case study in our schools that we've had athletics going on, and we haven't had spread, we've had some, but not tremendous spread from athletics. So I guess it's, I think that's why parents are questioning the difference. You know, we've had athletics that we've been successful with. So, you know, and we've also heard from students who've had, I've had, I've heard from parents who are concerned about their students breathing while they're in a band competition and running and that kind of thing. So are you concerned about that topic, that, you know, just with the actual heavy breathing that, you know, our athletes are not having to deal with that because they're not wearing a mask, but the band student is?
I have not heard from any of my teachers that that has been an issue.
Okay.
With breathing. Also with, as far as peer review, if we didn't have the preliminary results, we would have been talking in August about, we don't know if it's safe to do this. So I think we've been really lucky that they've been releasing these results. And as they've gone through the study, the results, which are these guidelines, have only gotten stronger. So when following that research and the progression of it, it has gotten better and better. I do think we are lucky that we have this data. It's unfortunate we don't have data on athletics, or don't know of that data. And I don't know what those would be. I do have this information, and as someone who's making decisions on behalf of fine arts students and staff, this is something that's really helped us be able to progress and play and sing safely and securely.
Okay. Lots of mics all of a sudden. Okay, Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The packet that you have with you is just this study, so that you would have some additional information on that. But there are also studies that have been done on aerosol transmission for many, many years, but they're specific to medical facilities. They do seem to be similar to this, and I'll be happy to find some of those and pass those on to the board.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Castillo, appreciate you coming in and sharing the information with us. And I'm not expecting you to be an expert on this type of information related to sports, but I do have one question. In the readings that you've done, do you have any sense of whether or not sports activities produce aerosol in the same ways as playing winds instruments or singing? Because I think that was a point of your, of this study, is to say that in these particular activities, it does something that just talking does not do. So do you know that by chance?
So from the studies, when you are louder, when you are projecting your voice, when you're using more air, more particles are expelled. In athletics, you are moving, you're expelling a lot of air. So I don't know, but to me, the more air that's coming out of you, the more likely it is that you are expelling these particles. There was a lot of information, or some information about vibrations, that the more vibrations, the more particles are expelled. So when you're hitting a really high C, that it has a lot more, it's almost off the charts of how many particles are being expelled. And then our baritones and bases, when they're doing a low C, it's at the bottom of the chart, almost like talking.
I wouldn't know about either of those, I can barely play the radio, so it's all good. But it's, to me, when I started calling around and speaking to different people in the medical field about this, to me, this kind of supports something that I heard anecdotally. One of the ICU nurses that I spoke to in our local hospital said that fifty percent of the COVID cases he has seen is directly related to choirs. And I thought, that's an interesting statement to say, man, in that environment, and, you know, they were unmasked, there were unmasked singing in choirs where they were seeing that. And so, you know, I know that's not scientific, but to me, that's a pretty startling observation from an ICU nurse.
Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. You may not know the answer to this question, I'm just curious. You know, a lot, I hear a lot from parents that are concerned about the long-term implications of wearing masks, especially in athletics or singing, or when you're being physical. Do you know if this study is going to continue to include what those long-term implications may be? You may not know, I'm just curious.
I don't think that they're looking at the medical issues of wearing a mask. I don't think that's part of their study, so I don't think that they'll include that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you for being here.
I have one more thing that I should mention. We surveyed our teachers last month about, do they want their student performers to wear masks or not? And I think it's important to stand behind what my teachers think. So we had one hundred and eighteen responses, which is a seventy-six percent response rate, which is pretty great. A hundred and six, which is ninety percent, said that we should wear masks while performing. And we had twelve, which was ten percent, say that we should not. I wonder if you guys knew that.
Can I just ask, is that from like K through twelve, or is that more high school that you're talking?
That is K-12. We're singing and playing K-12.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we will move to preventative educational approaches to community violence. And I would like to introduce our speaker, Andre Canty, and he is joining us by Zoom. So we have him, I think.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good, cool. Glad to be here. Does this go from there? I just want to share my screen. So, Owen. Can, okay, there we go. Get this up. All right, cool. All right, that'll work. Kind of new to this as far like presentations, so if anybody could give me a word of when to wrap up, that'd be much appreciated, so I'll try to do my best. So, well, appreciate everybody. It's good to see you all again. It's been a while. Yeah, I moved to Louisville actually last year, and I'll talk about that in a little minute, but again, just glad to be here. And also, I know it's carrying a lot of weight because of what's been going on the last couple of weeks. It is heavy, it is tense, and I get that. And I'm glad you all are having the conversation from all levels of government, from county commission to city council, and you all. And that is good, because once all of these align, we'll get to a good place. Because what happened last couple of weeks is not just on one particular school, it's not just on the city, it's a collective effort, right? It's letting people know that it's not just you, it's not just us, it's everybody in the city, in the county, and eventually the state. And this also, I just saw on Facebook today, today is also Jawan Lethal's birthday. Jawan was Xavier Dobson's cousin, who was killed a couple of months after him in 2016. So just holding him and his family in our hearts, so we can get through this, right? So I'll talk a little bit about Cities United, I'll talk about, a little bit about where we at right now as far as violence. I'll also talk about ways that you all intervene at Knox County Schools, and also some general kinds of ways of violence prevention intervention that other cities are doing. And it really gets down, get down to next steps, because really it's going to be about you all partnering with the city and their efforts, also with the county as a whole, to really make this happen, so.
Madam Chair, can I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
Andre, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Can you put your presentation, there you go, in presentation?
Oh, yeah, yeah, same way.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, so, again, that's me. Again, also, I mentioned I was also Xavier's mentor. I'm also, was the co-chair of the D O Task Force. I was on the original task force, and I was the co-chair of the implementation committee, so there are some intersections as far as my work, violence reduction, and you all's partner, right? Next, it's Louis, our Cities United, and what we do. It was founded in 2011 by these two gentlemen right here, former Mayor Michael Nutter, and also former Mayor of New Orleans, Mitch Landrieu, along with Dr. William Bell out of the Casey Family Programs, and also Black Men Achievement. So why was this founded, right? What are we dealing with? Our vision is creating safe, healthy, and hopeful communities for young black men and their families. And how do we get there? Our mission, that we're a network, and we support a national network of mayors, we'll commit to reduce the epidemic. I say epidemic for a reason, right? We see community violence as a disease, right? Something to be treated like any other kind of disease. This epidemic of homicides and shootings of black men and boys ages fourteen to twenty-four, we want to reduce that number by fifty percent by 2025. Though our target population is young black males, we work with cities who deal with violence reduction for all people. It's just that the black men and boys, as far as their population, homicides the leading cause of death for young black males in that age group. Of course, you know, young black people, period, are at the highest as far as disparities and violence, disease, impoverishment, everything else, right? And our core values, social justice, equity, youth voice, collaboration, which we'll get into at the end of this presentation, and also innovation, right? And our primary objectives are national movement and field building, culture and capacity building, right? So a lot of time, we work with cities and counties, they have a calling, and that calling is violence reduction. But they need some extra tools, right? So, you know, maybe, maybe you all have an on-the-ground violence interruption program going on, maybe you don't. Maybe you have a hospital-based intervention, which I'll talk about later. Maybe you don't have anything, right? We try to help you get, right? This is really based on peer-to-peer learn exchanges. So basically, what has the city done already? What has the school done already? What has been successful? And how can you all just, so many words, piece-mellet, and tailor it to Knox County Schools as far as the need, as far as the capacity, as far as the partnerships as well, right? So this is our beginning and how we got there. Next, we have our partner cities, we have one hundred and thirty and counting. As you can see by the screen on the right, most of these cities are located in the south. And as you see, East Tennessee, one of them, in Knoxville. And we want to actually increase that number, maybe about like five hundred, five hundred cities. Knoxville is not an anomaly as far as increased violence, which I'll get to in a minute. So you just take a network of all these cities across the country, have a shared language, shared goals, and shared activities. And we just see as partnering with these cities, and then partnering with each other, is how we achieve those goals. So our whole thing is reimagining public safety. So again, what does it mean to be safe, right? What does it mean to be whole? And we have three ways of doing that. That's interrupting the cycle of community violence, right? Let's get into the individual, dismantling systems of inequity. So as we're dealing with the individual, what are our policies, what are the practices, what are the institutions that are causing the environment for that kind of violence? Because no kid, no one, period, the last couple of years and decades, grew up and woke up thinking that I won't kill somebody today, I want to flip violence, right? A lot of time, it was an environment that caused that, right? And that environment is caused by inequity, so dismantling those systems. And also investing in sustainability of administrative operational activities, to base that capacity building for whatever core group, core organization is already doing the work. And the sustainability is really, no matter, you all are good people, right? You all are great people, right? But one day, it'll be a totally different school board, totally different superintendent. We all wish we can keep you all forever and ever and ever, but people change. But as people change, a lot of times, the issue, issues are there, right? So it's sustainability, so something that's in place, regardless of who's in office, regardless of who sits in these seats, regardless of the culture, violence prevention, violence intervention, and overall violence reduction will be there no matter who's in place. Next, just some stats as far as what we're dealing with, the cost of violence, because this is a moral argument, but also it's very costly when a life is taken. And I see all these stats right here, we're talking about billions of dollars that is lost. And that's just in funeral costs, medical costs, lost wages for the families of the victim and the victimizer, and also insurance premiums go up, right? And that's just not counting the criminal justice system and everything else. And it affects every facet and every sector of the community. It's not just the entire family. The whole communities are affected by this, right? So in a sense, the economic case as well, right? To save lives will not only save you money, it will increase revenue, because we have more people, right? If you have more people, the economy will go up. Economy go up, and we're all good, right? So this is the economic case, to speak about what we're dealing with. Next, just some theories as to why the rise in homicides, because again, it's a lot that was happening in Knoxville, it's happening across the nation. And there are some theories as to why. And these theories were drafted by Professor Richard Rosenfeld out of St. Louis, he's a criminology professor. And this is not a coincidence, as talking about the rise of homicides. And his conclusions were that COVID, attacking COVID, right? So treating it, you know, having proper social distancing, like everything to do with COVID, once you attack that, that's a way to address the rise right now, right? Because there's intersections. And sometimes the face of COVID, as we see, is some insane people, so also being affected the most by the violence, right? So there's an intersection as far as like, who is to face this? The rise in violence also coincide with recent protests, right? Last year, we all know what has happened last year with police violence in terms of Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, everybody else. Well, that rise and that tension mixed in with COVID, and the economic stress, because people are off work, people are doing virtual meetings at virtual schools, the mental health that comes into it by being isolated and not seeing your loved ones and your friends and everybody else, it's causing this tension for people. And that results in violence, right? So you have the isolation, economic stress of COVID, but you also have the stress and attention also from like, you know, like racial issues from last year. And as he said, that these violence reduction strategies and police reforms will, in a sense, alleviate some of the rise of violence and social unrest, right? A lot of times, this is happening, just not in the back. And it is national, sometimes local. All of these connect. This is our approach. We have two approaches. So how do we stop people from dying today? So basically, one of the immediate strategies, immediate programming that a city, county, and a school could do. And it deals with life after prison, incarceration, hospital-based intervention, and that's a partner with a hospital, street-level intervention, which I'll get to in more detail. Also, group violence intervention, basically is dealing with individuals. So that deals with interruption, interrupting, which means that how do we stop the violence like right now? So is any kind of beef, anything boiling? How could people intervene before there's any violence? But also, after violence occurs, what happens then, right? So diversion and alternate pathways, crisis response teams, stuff like that, which I'll get into as well. And then also long-term strategies. How do we stop the bleeding and the dying from the near future? And that deals with systemic and institutional changes. And as you see, you all at the top, education, workforce readiness and employment, the criminal justice system, family support, and community engagement. I know in Knox County, that the criminal juvenile justice kind of system, education, they both are our... I know in Knox County, that the criminal juvenile justice kind of system, education, they both are kind of housed in the county. And I also want to point out the community engagement that in our public health approach, they are the center of everything. They're at the center of not only the beneficiaries of these programs, these initiatives, but they're also the drivers, right? So it deals with mechanisms for input, mechanisms for accountability, also mechanisms for leadership. So just a little bit of history of Save Our Sons, Cities United, and our partnership, which is now Empower Knox. We've been, we've been partnering with Knoxville for a couple of years since the first, we have national convenings. And our first one was in 2014. I was actually on that cohort when I was a youth organizer, I was a youth advisory member. And Knoxville was also a host of our national convening in 2018. It was hosted and held a lot at the Chain Center. So what's going on right now? Again, that's prompted with everything that's been going on. We're now at a place of really investing in violence reduction that goes apart with a million-dollar commitment from the city of Knoxville through Empower Knox, which that's what Save Our Sons transitioned to. So we'll save our sons and transition to Empower Knox. So that investment is there, that commitment is there, right? So I think it is a rallying call and a chance for everybody to galvanize around this. And a lot of times, putting your money where your mouth is, is a way to alleviate that, right? So it just talks about the commitment and priority. It's saying that these kids are our kids, no matter where it happened, who was affected, the city's behind this. And today, even before today, I know the county and the county schools are also behind this, right? Just a little of our national programming, I won't go too deep in that. So I do the national programming as well as city outreach and engagement. That deals with Peace Challenge, that's partnering with cities and community-based organizations for crisis response. We do a young people. We have the Fellowship, 18- to 24-year-olds, six-to-month, eight-process of learning and applying. They talked to Stacey Abrams last year, which was really neat. I kind of fanned out too, you know, but it was really for their benefit. And a roadmap academy, it's like a more intimate way of really getting people involved in city planning and whatnot. And that's all of our programming. So next, we'll go to a little bit, and it'll go to Q and A after that. Just a little bit about some, what you can do for our education. I'll stop right there for any kind of Q and A. It's a comprehensive public approach when it comes to education, violence prevention. You have to acknowledge and disrupt the pathways of juvenile criminal justice. It also deals with the scooter prison pipeline. I know you all have the D E O task force and trying to intervene and reduce the disparities, which I was also on there. And there's a clear relationship between youth involvement in violence, and it deals with law, educational outcomes, and the juvenile justice system, right? So a lot of times, the victims and the victimizers and the communities most affected, they were also pushed out in one time, right? So intervening in school discipline, in school outcomes, and dismantling those disparities, that will get you, that will get you where you want to go and as far as violence prevention. So I'll sit there for, I've been going all day, but I'll stop right there.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Andre, for being here and presenting on City United and the work that you do. My goal for this presentation is that I know that we, as school board, are in the business of education and academics. It's just unfortunate that it also has paralleled into public safety as well. And so my goal for this presentation is for us to just continue to have a lens of all the decisions that we make and have a lens that violence and community violence is an approach that we can eliminate from the beginning or attempt to eliminate from the beginning from an education approach. So just opening our minds to the, to the lens of what can we do when we're doing programming, when we're funding these opportunities, when we're having this curriculum to incorporate the need to educate our kids on the importance of community violence and whatnot to do. And so that is, that is the ultimate goal of presenting, Andre. And as you know, if you've been reading, he will also be working with the city and the mayor's office to do the actual implementation that they're doing here. But my goal as a school board is to always have that lens that this does affect our schools, even though it's a public safety issue.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Have other questions, Ms. Fadden?
Yeah, I have a question, and I see Ms. Welch is also here. It mightn't be for her, but, or Andre, with the Cities United, I mean, I know we're right now all dealing with a crisis that's going on and a lot of violence. What we're doing with the city, is it more trying to deal with the program, I mean, the problem right now and stopping it? Or as we're moving forward, how do we prevent in the future or both? And Ms. Welch happens to be here, so she might can speak to it.
Great, then thanks so much. Stephanie Welch, City of Knoxville. It's good to see everybody this evening. And Andre has been a tremendous partner in Cities United. I mean, right now, you saw the three priorities and, you know, starting with stopping, interrupting violence. So we have a lot of investments across the city in addressing equity and making sure that there are really good enrichment programs and et cetera. But right now, we have to stop the violence, and that's what we're focused on. And Andre and his expertise with Cities United will be a key partner in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, nice to see you here. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andre, thanks so much for being with us tonight. And I respect that you didn't want to drive down from Louisville and got to join us on Zoom. I am curious, Andre, if you've, if you all have seen this in other communities. I mean, obviously, we have three young people, you know, Justin and Stanley and Janaria, all from the same school in different circumstances, different situations that, you know, were murdered in the last month and a half. And obviously, the school that they all attend was heavily associated with those instances. And I, and I know that sometimes, I think in communities, when there's a concentrated amount of violence that everybody becomes aware of, sometimes violence remains hidden, but obviously, this is not, that sometimes there's knee-jerk reactions that have unintended consequences. And I'm curious, from your perspective with Cities United, are there things that we need to be really thoughtful about not doing as Knox County schools in any type of response or way that we're trying to support our young people and our administrators and educators?
Yeah, yeah, appreciate that, appreciate that. What I would suggest, kind of immediate, right? Because, you know, a lot of times, it's immediate responses and also short-term responses and long-term kind of sustainability. So as far as the schools, you know, I've seen that too, right? So I think one is how do you frame the conversation? So framing the conversation meaning that the students, the principals, the teachers, they're centering the work. So which means that they're children, right? So I think it's asset-based framing, and not just on Austin East, but the people around it, right? The people surrounding Austin East as well. So framing the conversation, that could be a collaboration with schools, community-based organizations, young people as well. Because I know the student leadership in Austin East and also the school board, student rep, as a way to kind of collaborate on any kind of framing. So this is what we're dealing with right now. Also elevate the beauty of Austin East, the people, the places, the pathways that if you went to Austin East, you did a lot of great things. So one is the framing conversation, it being asset-based framing. And not, you know, not a narrative that is just Austin East, right? That they're the anomaly. And not, not having them as the anomaly because it will lead to bad perception, bad policy, and bad practice. We want to avoid that. So centering them. And also collaboration with, I know you have Sentinel, you have media. But most importantly, the students, the teachers, and the surrounding communities collaborate on some kind of framing that can be in the, in the forms of op-eds, it could be the form of newsletter campaigns, it could be the form of social media, right? And that's where the young people come in. They know how to use social media very well, a lot, a lot of time better than adults, right? Because they're not as combative, right? So, but also, where's the healing at? So the immediate kind of response is the healing for young people, right? So I want to, I think there's also efforts to do that, but school, like school-wide, school-wide, city-wide, is to have some healing, right? So let's get into counselors, mental health professionals, clergy, community members, mentors, just have collective effort. So before we get into any kind of planning, there needs to be some healing, immediate healing. I remember how it was when Xavier and Juwan died, and that wave of violence, it was very hard, right? Very hard. We have to center healing in that, right? So before we get, you know, get into what we're going to do, which we'll get into that. But it's also to center the kids in framing and healing. And that's the collaborative effort with everybody else. And collaboratively with everybody else, right? So community members, again, faith-based people and young people. So those are immediate steps right now. But again, I put everything a little bow, the framing communication kind of strategy, right? Between the schools, A, students, parents, sort of frame the conversations we're dealing with. Also uplifting the families of the people that were affected. All three of those kids and their families, they were good kids. And that need to be framed, right? But also the healing aspect, whatever resources, people that can be in these schools, that can be in these environments, neighborhood associations, wherever you can house people to have these conversations, not just vent, but the process will happen.
Yeah, I really appreciate you speaking about being asset-based. And obviously, I know in the work that you do, it's not about ignoring the deficit, but it's about centering on the asset and bringing solutions from what's already good, what's already beautiful in that space. Does City, does Cities United or do other entities that you all have aligned with or partnered with help specifically in the context of, of schools in the cities that they're in? The reason, one of the reasons why I say that is I know I've heard Superintendent Thomas say several times in the last few weeks about how he wants to see action, he wants to see something change. And I think when he says that, I'm not trying to speak for you, Superintendent, but I think he means he wants to try to find what are the appropriate ways as a school system that we need to be helping keep our kids safe. So are you all doing that type of work as you're working in cities? Or are there others that we need to be looking at?
A lot of times, that's the goal, that's the goal. So a lot of times, we work with cities, so we have, you know, we have stakeholders, right? Well, we suggest stakeholder groups, right? So those are the groups that's kind of steering, upmitting the work, but also deal with policy and practice recommendations. That's kind of where the schools can get into. So, you know, what can, what will be the beauty of this plan, once we get to it, is the city and the schools, you know, and above that, the county is all be at the same kind of stakeholder kind of group. There's been, there's been examples of city-county-based partnerships. Houston with Harris County, King County, where Seattle is at, South, Southern King County. Allegheny County, which is in Pennsylvania, that's where Pittsburgh resides. Because it aligns resources, it aligns language, so shared language. So if you all, the city, county commissioner, are all saying the same things, that's the framing part. But also, if the, if the allocated resources are from you all, there's also a part of it. But also collective kind of advocacy, right? So ideally, we want this to be something that the state should also be paying attention to. So that kind of regional kind of partnership. But we encourage every city who works on these kind of comprehensive public safety plans as part of the stakeholder kind of activities is to bring the schools in, because as I said before, the scooter prison pipeline is at the intersection of violence reduction. If those disparities are decreased as far as discipline and outcomes, then most likely, with everything else in place, you will get that reduction. And these are evidence-based strategies that has happened in other places. I say that they're happening in Minneapolis, Seattle, Los Angeles, I have various other examples. But again, that partnership with the cities, how to intervene, that is key. So that partnership, you all have to work in tandem with them. Of course, you know, we'll get, there's a point to where, you know, governance and decision-making, we'll get down that bridge when we get there. But the key is having everybody there for, again, collective advocacy, collective effort, and collective mission, vision, and activities.
Sorry, one last question, Andre, thank you. I really appreciate your comments about alignment too. Have you all formally had any, I know you've worked for a long time with the city, many years now. Has there been any conversations with our partners in county government with Cities United yet?
Well, a lot of it will be up to you all, right? So, you know, so a lot of, a lot of times, it's, once these kind of stakeholder groups, because you know, we have six milestones when it comes to planning a comprehensive public safety plan. One is the data. So what is the story in Knoxville? So not just the, the bad stuff, right? Not just the shoes and homicides, but all the asset security, right? The schools, right? The community-based organizations, right? The project grads, right? The people and places doing the work, right? Like you all, right? You all are assets. But also, with that kind of group, is, and I may, the question may have been getting ahead of me. Repeat that one more time as I go into it?
Andre, I was just curious if you all have already had some conversations with counterparts with the county?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of, a lot of that is, will be kind of, those kind of conversations is kind of going to be that kind of outreach. I mean, this is part of the conversation, but as far as like the more formal kind of execution of getting other county members. I think a lot of times, it's going to be with the, with the cities doing. But also, you know, you all have conversations, you know, on and off, you know? But I think once this core group has kind of started, I think, you know, with Empower Knox or community engagement, whoever the core team should be formalizing those kind of outreach efforts. But I can suggest right now, you know, who should kind of be there as far as that table. The schools, criminal justice systems, so you know, it needs the DA, but also, you know, the jails, you know? But it's, and also county commission, right? So county commission, you know, to have that kind of policy, right? And resource kind of intervention. But a lot of those engagements are really going to be from the city more than us. We're going to suggest it, right? This is what you should do, right? This is what has worked. And they execute from there. Now, of course, you know, you all can have conversations between that, but the more formal kind of outreach is that the city will hopefully do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for joining us this evening. We appreciate it. Good to see you. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move now to our discussion of our March 10th regular session agenda. Board members, since the agendas for our March meetings were published, you have received several updates via email. Detail for item 8C, the SR 2.0 grant, has been attached to your electronic agenda. The caption on the contract for construction of the new Northwest Sector Elementary School was updated. And the contract attached for item 9E. And for item 10A, the lease agreement with the barber shop located near our Harden Valley Schools has been attached. So those are the updates. So we will move into discussion on items and contracts. Any questions or comments on one or two? Three or four? Ms. Owen?
I have a question on number three. Is Freddie Cox still here? Oh, yes.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you. As we do this, this contract, the first year is at no cost, correct? Does that tie us into consecutive years or is it an option after that?
So it's definitely an option that we can bring back before the board. Since this is a new organization, they really need to show some value. So I don't want to say that, yes, we're signing on automatically, so we can bring that back.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions on five or six? Seven or eight? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On seven, and my intent was to get this answered before this meeting, but I think that contract states something about the capacity or the expected number of participants is somewhere around 420, which is a lot in that particular event. And so I'm just curious if, you know, if we have any concern about, and if our policy speaks... our policy speaks into that type of event related to our COVID public health guidelines that we're following.
So, so you're questioning the number of students in that venue and the spacing sort of confrontation?
Yeah, and, and, um, and, and frankly, I'm not quite, again, I, I meant to get this uh answered ahead of time, I'm not quite sure exactly what, how our policy speaks into those off-site events at this point, so.
Anyone like to jump in here? Mr. Thomas? Mr. Myers, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'll do my best to try to, to try to answer the specific questions. So um in order for the contract to move forward, uh we would need to be operating under whatever restrictions the county may have. So that would be on the event centers and to ensure those safety protocols. Uh, on our end, we don't have anything that would necessarily restrict that. We would encourage our schools to follow the same protocols we'll be following for our problems.
Thank you.
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Watson, I, I can also add that a uh release has been prepared for each of the high schools that have decided to do a prom this year, which, which this would be one of them. And uh the release goes into uh the same protocol that the schools are following. In other words, if the temperature checks are, are still in effect, which looks like they may be going away, that would be done. But obviously you would have the, the extra uh hand sanitizing and you would have the extra cleaning and uh there'd also be uh the parent or the student, if the student's 18 or over, would also be signing the waiver saying that, that they have, that they're not sick, right? And that, you know, they don't have a fever and et cetera. So, so that, that is an extra precaution that's being taken as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dupler. Any other questions? Okay, any questions on nine? Okay, and then we move into board policies. I believe that all our policies are second readings. Do we have any questions on any of these board policies? Ms. Owen?
I have one on D. In looking back at that, I believe the note that we've put on there, let me see where it went. It's tiny. The note we put on there is through February 27th, but I believe the governor's order is longer than that now. Is it, should we change this so that it does not have a definite date?
Can, yeah, which line are you on?
At the, if you go all the way to the end, the red section?
Oh, at the very, very end. So it references the executive order dated March 20th. And let's see, and that is referenced on what line above?
I think Mr. Dupler may be able to answer it.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, no problem. Uh, so, so Governor Lee's executive orders have, have changed, you know, throughout, I mean, as the, as the pandemic has, has evolved. So um our office can certainly modify this to, to reflect that, you, you know, whatever the current order is that, that would apply, uh then.
So would you delete the dates?
I, we could, I mean, we could leave some of the dates certainly as, as far as when the orders came out, uh but I, but I think Ms. Owen's referring to the, to the last dates uh downward, talks about March 20, 2020 to February 27th, 2021. We could, we could simply i- indicate that, you know, whatever time period these apply.
Okay.
Is there a way, because I mean, to me, we're poli- we're gonna vote on this policy next week and it seems like we have no idea when these orders are gonna stop, that maybe it's, we just reference the current, you know, something more generic than a specific dated one, that we are just gonna abide by whatever the governor's orders are or something? I don't know if that would, if we could do something like that, because I do see to Ms. Owen's point, he, he's gonna keep putting things out and dates and they're gonna keep expiring.
Right, right. I, yeah, yeah, I agree. We can, we can put in there that, you know, whatever the current, the current order is that would allow this, um you, you, that's what we would refer to.
Okay. Okay. That's great. So we'll get some updated furbage for next week for that. Okay, great question. Anything else on policies? Okay, well, did you have a question or you, okay, we'll move to grants. Questions on A?
Um, yeah, I had a question, and I don't know who to ask this of. First off, a little bit, I think I'm on the right one. This is about connectivity advices and um, I'm having trouble with my computer getting stuff up. Probably a little bit of my question was, it seems like a lot of the dates have expired. I mean, almost seemed like this was all supposed to have been done by December. So that's, if you can just kind of generally talk to this and, you know, um how are we getting devices out to people, that kind of stuff? And then speak to the date issue too.
So this is a grant that Laura Denton, our grants uh director, applied for back in August, and we were actually awarded in September and we were just notified in, in January. So it's one of those congratulations, we've sent you a check and we said, yes, we would love to take that check. So this covers about-
And all the dates have expired.
Absolutely. So this covers about six months' worth of the hotspots that we're issuing to our students. Uh, so from basically August through December is what we're uh saying this will cover the cost for.
Okay, so we're basically just retroactively paying ourselves back for hotspots?
Yeah, we, we have already paid those bills and, you know, uh sent those devices out to students, so this is just kind of truing up that account.
And can I just ask you more on the connectivity? I mean, um, the hotspots that we've put out there for people, are they forever or are they short-term? How, I don't even know how hotspots work.
So we're trying to look at them in a lot of cases as a short-term uh solution. We've given out 516 Comcast codes uh in our partnership with the Knox Education Foundation. So we're really trying to get students that wired, you know, high-speed connection versus relying on hotspots all the time. But there are some instances, especially out in our Carter community, where, you know, connectivity doesn't exist, so a hotspot's the only option.
Okay, and I mean, do we, do you have a sense, are we planning on continuing this?
I, I would anticipate that we have some type of hotspot deployment in the fall as well, uh but we really are trying to partner and get those folks that high-speed connection. So I think it's still there. Our role, we're still trying to figure out, you know, how heavy in the hotspot business we are, uh but we're, we're trying to find better options.
Well, and I know when all this first started happening, I know the chamber kind of took the lead on something where we were having conversations with our partners in the community on this. Did anything ever come of that? I mean, like-
That's the, uh, the partnership with the Knox Ed Foundation and Comcast so that we can get families that, uh, you know, cost assistance for low or no-cost uh internet access in their home. There's also some funding coming out um through the last round of the stimulus package that's gonna be directly to families. So um we're still waiting on guidance from that, but that'll be another opportunity for folks to kind of subsidize internet costs at home.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, um, so Ms. Bab asked the original question that I had, but I also think it would, I'm assuming you all have access to this, I think it'd be good to see the effectiveness of our strategy um in terms of um how many families have we successfully helped connect, you know, and get online? And also if there's any, uh, if we are aware of any deficits, where we still have some gaps there. Um, I'd love to get a sense of that. And also to um wired versus um any kind of hotspot. I, I'd just like to try to see the total impact that KCS has had in that space as we've tried to help assist.
Uh, I mean, currently we have, uh, we've purchased about 1,300 total hotspots. Uh, about a thousand of those are out in circulation now, so it ebbs and flows. Uh, obviously, our biggest month was December when uh we went red for that week. We had a lot of people raising their hand, looking for some assistance. Uh, so, you know, currently we're at about a thousand hotspots and um we kind of go from there.
Thank, thank you. Do you have a sense of whether or not we, there's still families that we just haven't been able to support?
We're, we're still getting requests every single day. Um, you know, so some days we may only hear from one or two families, some days we may hear from, you know, 10 or more. Uh, and, and we're trying to kind of gather information as we talk with them to see what challenges uh they're trying to overcome.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions on that? Okay, thank you. Okay, and moving to the grant B from the Builders Exchange. Okay, or C? Moving to contr- um, yes, Mr. Watson?
I'm, I'm, I'm assuming this is correct, but the way this reads, it says approving receipt of, of the funding, um on C, I'm assuming that in, in that, if we do approve that this coming um week, we're also approving the allocation plan that the district has formulated, correct? It is, we are approving both things if we should approve that.
That's very, it's a great question. So what we will do is, we wanted to make sure the board, you know, understood the direction we were going and then the board agreed, because we haven't filed the application yet.
Which is due the 15th.
It's due the 15th.
Yes.
And so what we will do is, once we file the application, we will bring that back to the board for approval, but that application will align with what we presented tonight.
So what are we exactly being asked to be approve, approved on C?
So this is just the grant?
This is just approving the grant to the receipt of the funds. Then we will, so we will then submit the application to the, to the state.
Okay.
And then in that application, we will know what our plans are for spending. Then we will bring that back to the board and essentially at that point, the board is approving the spending plan.
Okay, so the board will have another opportunity to approve the spending plan?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on that? Okay. Moving to contracts, any questions on one? Two? Three? Four? Ms. Owen, did you have a question on that one?
Not yet.
Okay, five? Or I'm sorry, I'm, what am I on? E. I'm so lost, I'm so sorry. I don't think I got enough sleep last night. Okay, did anybody have a question on D? I don't know if I said D, so. Any questions on the ones prior to that, since I don't, okay, E?
We figured it out, it's all-
Okay, Ms. Owen, take your way.
I guess this is D and E together.
Okay.
Since we have some new board members, um could someone talk to us about school construction bid processes?
Mr. Oaks?
I'll start this, and if we need to, uh, Mr. Dillingham can come up and, and bail me out or fill in, fill in the gaps. And I wanted to talk about uh both of these contracts anyway. If you, if we, we talk about uh, we can talk about them simultaneously, I guess. If you look at the Adrian Burnett contract, which is 9D, the uh, our budget for Adrian Burnett was uh $19 million. And if you look, that, that base contract comes in for just over uh $19 million. What you're looking at in the recommendation there is $19.9 million, almost uh $20 million. That includes uh for what we call alternates uh in the bid. We bid it for the construction of the school for a capacity of 600. And then the first alternate was an additional two classrooms, and then the second alternate was two more classrooms, and the third alternate was two more classrooms, and the fourth alternate was demolition of the existing building. And we're recommending we accept all four of those alternates so that we'll take, take the school up to a capacity of about 800. We'll add an additional uh six classrooms and, and we'll get the, the existing building torn down. And we got really good pricing on that. If you look at the uh, the bids that we got on the classroom alternates, they're significantly less than we would pay for a portable classroom. So it will never be less expensive to build these than right now. Now, having said that, that does take us to a $19.9 million cost on this contract, and our original budget projection was $19 million. It also, so it's, it's over what our budget projection was. So we're gonna have to come back to the board when we present the FY22 capital plan and ask for some additional appropriation and funding in order to, to just pay for this contract. But we'll also have to ask for some additional uh funding, uh because we now have no budget for furniture fixtures, equipment, security and those kind of items. So we'll have to come back and add those into the budget. The, the next contract on there, which is with Tricon, which is a contractor we haven't worked with before, so it'll be very interesting to uh, to work with them, is for the Northwest Mill School and you'll see, or Northwest Elementary School, rather, and you'll see that bid came in at just over $23 million. Well, that, that $23 million includes an alternate uh as well. The, the base bid that they gave us was about $21.9 million, and then an alternate for eight additional classrooms is 1.1 million, which is uh a similar cost per classroom that we uh experienced in the bid that we got on Adrian Burnett. So we're asking to go ahead and, and add those eight classrooms uh to this project now, which will take the school to a capacity of slightly over a thousand students uh when it opens. So we'll be, we're being good shape there. The, this is another uh interesting too. We've already talked about in the past, when the board approved the purchase of this property, we talked about uh a road improvement project with the county on which we would uh split the costs. And uh we're estimating that our cost on that would be about 2.5 million dollars. So if you look at, at what's uh in this uh contract, $23 million, add 2.5 million to that and then come back and add more money for furniture fixtures and equipment and security and, and uh, and, and the other amenities that we need to finish out the project. And we're talking about a project that's gonna be in the neighborhood of $29 million. The, the, and we'll have to come back and talk about that when we, when we bring the FY22 uh capital plan uh as well. The interesting thing on these two projects, as well as the Lonsdale project, is the bids are coming in very similar to one another, uh meaning that they're, they're over what we had originally projected as a budget, but they're over in the same ways and in roughly the same amount. You know, so we, we don't think there's anything out of line uh with the bid process and the way they come in. We can also tell you, and this is, this is something that we struggle with all the time, when we develop projects in the capital plan and, and we're projecting for out years, it's how much do you budget? Uh, you know, do you budget for what your costs are right now? Do you budget for what you think your costs might be in three years when you actually get around to building the project? Uh, or you, do you go somewhere in between? And, you know, we, we try to go somewhere in between, but you never know what the construction market's gonna be and you never know what pandemic you're gonna be in the middle of and how that's gonna uh affect the construction market. So that's, yeah, you know, and that, then with these specifically, what has changed since we budgeted these projects is the county building code has changed. The county's adopted the 2018 International Building Code, and that's got some more stringent requirements in it for construction of schools. Specifically uh within Knox County, uh we have a requirement to provide a storm shelter uh in our schools. Well, actually, we have a requirement to provide a storm shelter for schools that are located in about half of the county, but we don't think it's appropriate to put a storm shelter in half of our schools and not in the other half of the schools that we build. So we included that in all these projects, uh that added about a million dollars. And then about another million is included in uh more stringent seismic requirements uh that are in that building code. So, you know, it, there are things that have come up that have, that have pushed our budget numbers up, and I don't think, I don't think, and Doug can, can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we're ever gonna build another elementary school for 15 or 16 million dollars, you know, unless it's, you know, for 200 kids, you know, and I don't think we, we wanna do that either. So, did that help answer some of the questions?
And if I'm not mistaken, building materials are at an increased price right now, right?
That's, that's right, and that's, that's one of the reasons we want to go ahead and, and, you know, we asked you to approve part of the, part of the uh, the Lonsdale uh contract last month, or part of the funding on that, and that's, helps to lock in some of the pricing uh on that so that we can move forward.
Because I'm hearing that it may not rebound anytime soon for the material cost.
You mean, you mean-
Right. It may not correct, it may just stay where it is?
Have you, have you heard anything on that?
That would be a negative for all of us from COVID. Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. Okay. Ms. Bab?
Well, my other concern is, I mean, I'm hearing at least in the home building, that the lack of supplies, are we hearing anything from our contractors on them being concerned about actually being able to complete the builds because of not being able to get supplies?
Haven't heard anything about the- Haven't heard anything about being able to complete the build. What it does is it just, it just adds time to the amount of time it takes to finish the build. I know that the, the contractors on Lonsdale wanted to go ahead and get their steel ordered while they could lock in the prices and that was one of the reasons we just brought a partial appropriation to you on that contract.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You, you touched on this, Russ, but I realize that the Northwest is larger than the other one, but did the Adrian Burnett, was it bid enough to where, I mean, early enough to where we saved on the, the cost, like you were saying, have just skyrocketed? If you said what's futures, lumbers around $1,000 depending on, you know, back and forth and steel and all other things. Did, did we get a better price on the Adrian Burnett and not get caught as much with the, the new prices, so to speak?
No, I, I, I think Adrian Burnett, which is a similar project to Lonsdale and similar in size and even similar in the fact that we added or are recommending adding the six classrooms. Those projects both came in with similar costs or coming in with similar costs, something between 19 and 20 million. You know, so I think those were both, you know, caught in the same, you know, pricing category, so to speak. So the, the, the real difference, I think, that we're seeing in the cost of the projects is, is the size of the project. I think they're all getting the same, the same type bid.
Just out of curiosity, if we were going to, to build Carter today, would we be looking at a, at a figure about like this?
Probably, I mean, you know, that's a, that's a 600 student school, as I remember.
I just wondered out of curiosity as to how much, you know, materials and, and things have gone up.
Well, it, it's entirely speculative, but I.
Well, yeah, I realize that. I just, I just wanted y'all's opinion.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. In my opinion, it would be about the same cost. If you take a look at the cost per square foot on all three of these that we're building right now, they're all very similar.
Okay.
Square footage costs have really escalated due to, in large, due to additional code requirements now, especially the seismic and also the decision to go ahead and provide storm shelters in all of these schools, even though they're not necessarily required.
Right, right. Well, thank you. I, I appreciate y'all explaining that.
Thank you so much. Any other questions on these two items? Mr. Watson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Russ, just, just a quick question. I noticed like in the Tricon contract, that was the, they were the low bid and we had quite a few bidders on that contract. Are we always forced to accept low bid and what are some of the other major factors that we look at in accepting a bid?
Let me let Doug talk to that because he's the one who basically manages our, our bid process on, outside of procurement.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. The answer to your question is pretty much yes, we will accept low bid. Now, along with that, a successful contractor is required to provide a 100% performance and payment bond. So if they can, if they are low bid and they can provide the required bonding and the required insurance, then as, as a public entity, we have a hard time not accepting a low bid. So as Russ stated, we have not worked with this group as of yet, but, but actually the architect on the, the Northwest Sector project has worked with him or is currently working with him on a couple of projects. So he hasn't said anything really bad about them yet, so we're, we're very hopeful.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions. Thank you so much. Okay, and we have two regular agenda items. Any questions on A? And we've had an explanation on B, but do we have any questions on the salary incentive? Okay, thank you for working on that, for the finance team and Superintendent Thomas. Okay, and we, we have seven public forum speakers. Would the board like to take a break? Five minute break? Okay, let's take a five minute break. Let's meet back at, at five minutes from the actual time because nobody will be looking at that clock. So let's do 6:50.
Okay, we will start public forum and our first speaker is Heather Overton. Heather Overton. Hi, Ms. Overton. If you will just state your name and county of residence and then you'll have five minutes to speak.
Okay, good evening. My name is Heather Overton. I live in East Knoxville, Knox County. My son is a second grader at Green Magnet Academy and I wanted to say first that my heart goes out to all of those touched by the recent deaths of our students, Justin, Stanley and Janaria. I know it's been hard on our teachers and I'm sure for everyone involved, touched by those lives. I also wanted to thank Knox County Schools and the board for providing safe and vibrant classrooms. I cannot say enough about how much I love Green Magnet Academy and how I'm so thankful that I found it and my son is thriving there and I know that he is safe every day that I drop him off and regardless of what's happening around in the community, I am 100% sure that they are taking care of my baby and, and that's a wonderful feeling. And I applaud you all for providing that environment and of course to the administration. I do want to, like Andre said, I feel that the recent violence isn't a Austin East problem, isn't a Knox County Schools problem, it's a community problem. And we're all connected communities. Our elementary age kids are feeling this as much, just like Vine and just like Austin East. Our babies are hurting, they've lost people, their parents are upset, the teachers are upset. And so I'm here from the elementary side to share, to ask that as elected officials, that you continue to push the police force and city government to provide simple things. The issue is very complex, but I'm here to remind you that there are simple things that can be done easily, like trash pickup. Around Green Magnet is filthy. I did put in a request for a particular bag of garbage that exploded and that was picked up before this board meeting, so I am very thankful to report that. But well lit streets, clean streets, KPD presence, these are things that we can be doing right now while we're figuring out. while we're figuring out the complex details of the violence in the community. And you all are the ones that can ask for that. I ask and I'm here to ask for your help. Another thing that I think that you all can ask and demand is more support and a stronger relationship with DCS. Our school counselors could better do their job and better help our children if they had responsive DCS caseworkers. And I don't know necessarily how to get that done. I'm going to try to be a squeaky wheel, but I wanted to come to you today asking you all to be the squeaky wheel. We could get more done with a better partnership with DCS. And this is coming directly from school counselors. And a final reminder for you all is to please give the extra resources and support to our affected and connected inner-city schools. Back the administrators, the teachers, the PBIS teams, the school counselors. They now more than ever need to know that you have their back and that we're important. Inner-city schools, the Magnet schools are amazing and we need to show the community how awesome they are. Any questions?
Thank you very much for coming to speak.
You're very welcome. Thank you all for everything you do.
Hillary Godsey. Hillary Godsey. No, that's fine. If you will just state your name and county of residence and you have five minutes to speak.
My name is Hillary Godsey and I'm from Knox County. So I'm coming here to talk to you about the Colorado aerosol study. Actually, I just kind of want to ask questions and if it's okay, I'd like to email all of you at the end and kind of hear feedback from you. Ms. Castillo was the one who provided the information and talked about the study. She's in over-the-arts program is how I understand it. So she doesn't really have any medical degree or anything. Parents were here last month during the meeting and we're talking about different studies and we were kind of all dismissed. So my question is, would it not have been better to have a medical professional here? Maybe from even both sides to go over the study? What study are we going off of for the sports program? Is the Colorado aerosol study what we are basing the arts program and our school COVID policy on? There are plenty of studies out there as we heard during the meeting from the parents. Are we going to hear any of those studies and have them presented before the board? How do you feel about this study not being peer-reviewed or even concluded? PCR tests are 3% effective. Were the subjects in this study tested with those tests to conclude if they had spread COVID through aerosols? Should we not take into account the age range we're talking about? Five to 18-year-old kids that are in the arts program? 0.2% of deaths in the U.S. are younger than 25 due to COVID. And the death numbers have already been proven to be jaded. So why are we so afraid of them playing instruments and performing? I'm not naive enough to say that there isn't info from both sides. There are studies saying that it works, it doesn't work, the aerosols go this far or that far. But in your position, aren't you supposed to remain neutral and listen to all of the data? Take all of the data into account and then come to common ground? If it's okay, I'd like to send you all this in an email and I'd love to hear back some of the responses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rebecca Reeves. Rebecca Reeves. Okay. And then after her, we're going to have Debbie Stafford. If you'll just state your name and county of residence and then you have five minutes.
Okay. My name is Rebecca Reeves and I'm from Knox County. Today, before I start talking about the Colorado study, I want to begin by reading a list of the names of all of the children in Knox County who have died from COVID so far. I'm going to read their names one at a time.
I believe our policy is that we cannot address specific named people.
Exactly. And I'm not going to be naming anybody because there's no one to name. So that's my point. Basically, I'm not going to talk about any names because between the ages of 0 to 17 in Knox County, out of 97,000 children, we have not had one single death. Yet we treat our children as walking death traps. Yes, they can test positive and perhaps pass it to a family member. So let's talk about that. In Knox County, the age group belonging to the ages of 18 through 44, that year group, we only had 11 deaths out of a population of 173,000 in that age group. I would like to know if people are aware of these stats. Are we telling people that we have only had 11 deaths in Knox County between the ages of 0 to 44? Or is it just fear that we are still selling? Even with grandparents between the ages of 66 through 74, there have been 130 deaths out of a population of 40,000. So my question is, where is the pandemic in Knox County? We are not New York and we are not California and many of us know the truth of what happened there. I was at the last meeting and the phrase that keeps ringing in my head is, "We just can't take away masks during a pandemic. We must follow CDC guidelines." And I say to heck we do. First, Knox County is not pandemic level. The second, CDC has been wrong this whole entire time. Third, we are not doing good because of masks. I've contacted other schools, cities, and their school boards. And the ones who do not have a mask mandate, they are either doing just as good, if not better than us. And we should actually be following them. The more restrictions, the worse COVID cases and deaths are. I'm hearing from medical professionals that COVID patients who are the most ill usually have a common issue which is a lack of vitamin D. So instead of masking our band members and our choral members, why don't we just pass out vitamin D to them? But of course, we're not going to do that because we're not in charge of anybody else's health unless it's about masks. That's the only time that we actually mandate health. So also, when it comes to this Colorado study, my concern is it's an observational study. It's not complete. I do not want us to decide anything based on this study because it's not even an RCT study. We would be foolish to use this as anything concrete for our children and it wouldn't be right. So who do we listen to? Last time I was here, we've had doctors come up and they say they're anti-mask or they're pro-mask. So which ones do we listen to? Well, a doctor wears a mask, but they don't study masks. They're not trained on masks. And as a matter of fact, people train them on how to wear a mask. They have PPE experts, respiratory therapists, industrial hygienists that come in to train them on what mask to wear, for what occasion, for what patient they're treating or what disease. And it's never for viral transmission. Masks are not worn to protect you from viral transmission. They are worn to protect from bacteria going into an open wound or blood splatters going into their face. All the studies done pre-COVID all proved that none of the masks made any difference in any of the RCT studies that were done as the difference is viral transmission. So what I'm going to do is tell you who we need to listen to are these two ladies that I'm going to give you, Tammy Clark and Kristin Megan. And I urge everyone to look them up. Tammy Clark and Kristin Megan, they are scientists. They are OSHA certified. They actually are court-certified witnesses. They go to court and testify against masks or about masks. They have decades of research between them. Number one, they are screaming masks do not work against viral transmission. As a matter of fact, they probably make it worse. They are probably making it worse. Second, masks are absolutely, any oxygen deprivation you have, it is irreversible. And I want to repeat that. Any oxygen deprivation and especially in our children whose brains are still growing, they're not even developed, who need full oxygen, we will never be able to reverse that on our children. And I want that to sink in. And it might be small, just like Flint, Michigan water. When you take a drink of water in Michigan, it's not going to kill you right away. But when you drink it over and over again slowly, it's going to start deteriorating inside of your body. Just like these masks, slowly, a little bit of oxygen decreasing at a time on a child's brain who's growing. What memory problems are we going to see? What types of problems? I don't know. But band members and especially choral, you know, when they're singing and all this kind of stuff. I used to sing. I used to do that kind of stuff. You need oxygen and so it really hurts me to think that we could be harming our children in this type of a way. And I see that I'm almost out of time, so I really do thank you for your time and consideration today.
Thank you very much. Debbie Stafford. And Sheri Garrett will be next. Stafford's not here. Okay, is Sheri Garrett here? Okay, come on up. If you'll just state your name and county of residence and you have five minutes to speak.
My name is Sheri Garrett. I live in Knox County. I am employed by Nurse Debbie, Debbie Stafford, at Nurse Debbie's Health and Wellness. And I brought her prepared statement tonight. She wasn't able to be here. Thank you all for having me. Nurse Debbie is a family nurse practitioner in Powell, Tennessee, who has approximately 4,000 patients under her care, about half of them pediatric. A number of those pediatric patients are currently enrolled in Knox County Schools. Additionally, three of her children have attended Knox County Schools and either graduated high school and had the graduation denied under the guise of not safe due to COVID or left Knox County Schools to pursue a diploma through homeschool resources. It is my understanding that a data collection has been presented to you all from Colorado University as a reason to continue demanding our schoolchildren be masked and isolated from one another. It is from my reading of the data collection that Colorado University has presented the following. Wind instruments and singing produce aerosol, which vary by instrument as well as intensity. The produced aerosol amount is, on average, similar across all instrument types and singing with the exception of the oboe. Most aerosols being expelled from the bell of the instruments and from the mouth of the performers. Singers produce aerosol at similar rates as woodwinds and brass. The amount of aerosol varies depending on consonants, vowels, intensity, and pitch. Singers wearing a well-fit three-layer surgical-style mask reduces aerosol emission. General procedures, see Appendix G. Zero masks must be worn at all times. Multi-layer bell covers must be used by all winds instruments. Okay, that's some interesting data, but it's not yet a fully published study, it's my understanding. It's certainly noteworthy the data they have collected. Two of Debbie's three daughters went through the band program at Powell Middle and Powell High School. Let me tell you about sanitation. We've been told that students drip the spit from instruments onto the carpeted floors as all instruments require breathing accumulate moisture or spit. Because the band programs in Knox County do not have multiple instruments and few of us are made of money, it is a very common practice as of at least one year ago for one student to play a brass instrument, then hand off to the next student who only switches out the mouthpiece. There is no ultraviolet, autoclave, or chemical sterilization of said equipment. As a practitioner, she's seen a huge increase in insomnia, depression, anxiety, and gastrointestinal exacerbations of Knox County students. It's my understanding multiple children in Knox County have been successful at suicide and many others have attempted. I cannot give you a definite answer because the data is not provided in a timely manner through any epidemiological source that I'm aware of. As a practitioner, COVID is largely treatable. Vitamin D and zinc can help lessen the severity of symptoms. Hydroxychloroquine has prevented every patient of hers who has taken it from needing the hospital. The NIH is giving harmful advice by telling people to ride it out until they are so sick the hospital is the only option. There are plenty of options. Ivermectin has shown outperformance of economy or hiding our children or worse yet, covering their faces out of horror that we may vomit. We accept it as a part of life. One of you said, "If we can save one life, wouldn't we?" Yes, we should. So what have we done to stop the suicides? What have you done as a school board to help these children with working parents come to school? You all have the power to end this foolishness. Give families and teachers who are too afraid of COVID to meet in person the option to do online learning. Give teachers who are not afraid of COVID the ability to return to school with students without suffocating their faces in breeding phobias. Now, all children and parents have the option to stay home. To families watching the school board meeting, pay attention. Pay attention to the harm the school board is causing your children. Reach out to friends who homeschool. If the school board refuses to provide a safe place to learn and grow without the psychiatric devastation, find a way to pull your children out of Knox County Schools because this school board at present is harming your children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tanya Coats. And Lance McCold will be after Tanya Coats.
Tanya Coats. Knox County, thank you for this opportunity. So as you were talking about the Ezra monies today, I know it seems unrealistic to ask this, but the Ezra money I know that you received was over $50 million. We wish that we had gotten the $224 million that Memphis Shelby County got or that the Davidson County got 124 million, right? But knowing that our problems with Knox County Schools has been exacerbated by this pandemic. We have over a handful of schools that are well over 100 years old. And I know it's one-time money, but as you listened to the superintendent earlier today, there are challenges that educators have actually took on this year to make sure that your school system is run in a decent and orderly manner. And those funds that he has carved out has... I just got, my phone blew up of saying how thankful they are for your consideration of passing this next week. So I will talk about that more next week as if you pass it or if you don't pass it, it'll depend on the conversation. But just knowing that we need more than 150, we need more than the $50 million that were sent to us. We have buildings that do not have, and Russ Oaks can actually talk about this, right? That we have buildings that air conditioning systems are just as old as those buildings. And the $50 million can actually go into one or two of our schools and we wouldn't have enough for the other 84 buildings that we have. We just know that any little piece of money, that knowing that our teachers need it, our students need it, and more so to help you in the district. There are a lot of challenges besides just masks right now. We haven't had textbooks for over 20 years that are up to date and it's because of the funding. We know that the district has done everything. They have given more than their fair share. And now it's our time for not only our legislators on our state level to give us the money that we deserve because saying that we're fully funded in the state of Tennessee is just not right. If we have over 500-some teachers in our districts that we have to actually pay for out of our pockets and that we need these people to actually do what... We have parents that want to have foreign languages. I don't want to talk about all the foreign languages that we have, but we try to ensure that we address all parents' needs, all students' needs. But now it's time that we start addressing all educators' needs. We have a shortage in spit where we can't even, we have to actually pay for, I don't know if you knew this or not, maybe you do, but we had, just up to two years ago, we had to pay for RTI out of our own pockets. So when they say that they're fully funding public education in Knox County, Davidson County, or Shelby County, it's a hoax. They're giving us the money that they think that we need, but we need a whole lot more. So the $50 million, we're not saying that we won't take it. I know Mr. Thomas would probably run me down the street saying that I'm not giving $50 million back, but just knowing that you need more money to help run your schools. And we can't say thank you enough for what we know is to come and knowing that your job is never done and we thank you.
Thank you very much. Lance McCold. And please just state your name and county of residence.
Lance McCold, Knox County. Thank you for having me, members of the board. I didn't have the benefit of seeing the plan that Mr. McPherson presented to you, so my marks about how to use the SRT money is blind. But the things I'm hearing from teachers is they are worn out. And the people, they're being overworked and I'm sure they appreciate. I'm sure they're thrilled to hear that they're going to get a little extra compensation. Not all that they deserve by a long ways. But they need to have some things that are tangibly reducing their workload. You know, and we have, and the story we've always had is we don't have the money, we don't have the money, we don't have the money. It's not true anymore. You've got $50 million. You've got $50 million and if the Democrats have their way, there will be many millions more on the way. So I would urge you to raise the wages for custodians until you get every custodian position built. I would urge you to hire people to get the kids off the bus, put the kids on the bus to manage the lunchtime, take it off the teachers. I would urge you to hire extra mental health workers, social workers, counselors, we have the money. Do what you need to take care of your staff, the children and the staff. People tell you over and over again how important mental health problems are, but we have the money. I mean, spending it on all the things that Mr. McPherson mentioned are perfectly fine, but you've got to take care of the people first. When you've done, when you've done taking care of the people, then you can take care of these other things. So you know, what I urge you to do is to focus on people things when you spend this money. They're all related to the COVID pandemic, they're all, there are lots of things that are justified. The custodians, there's no reason, well, there's a good reason we haven't had enough custodians is because we don't pay them enough and we can't keep them, but there's no reason we can't pay them enough to keep them, to get them in now. You know, there's been a reason we haven't had enough social workers and counselors for our schools and our, and mental health workers for our teachers is because we haven't had the money. So we have money, you know, let's spend it where the people are. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate everybody that has come out tonight and that concludes public forum.
Thank you, Ms. Babb. Okay, do we have any comments for board forum? Ms. Christie.
I would just like to congratulate our student rep, Abigail, she was the valedictorian this year for L and M. Congratulations.
Very nice, Abby, I'm not at all surprised. Okay, wonderful, thank you for sharing that, Ms. Christie. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to encourage everybody to take a listen to our students in the community who went to the Change Center this past Friday with WJBE hosting that. It was an opportunity for them to kind of voice, to lift up their own voice concerning violence in their community and things that they want to see happen and I really appreciate Andre's comments about the way we frame this conversation and so I'd ask that we send out a link to that to all the Board and would encourage you to take a look at that and then also appreciate Board Member Satterfield for helping host that and allow for a platform for students to lift up their voice.
Daniel, can you send the link to us through Terry?
I can.
Okay, that sounds great. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.